Right now, you know, for the and so I
The brides to me for the hour. So we can hear brides to me for the hour. So we can hear from more of the candidates. And I think it's absolutely fantastic because now we get to spend an hour with the candidates, which it seems like a long time, but there's so much to talk about and we can talk a little bit more in depth about all the issues going on. So thank you, Mark Breckbell. Appreciate it very much. I'll be actually through the primary having his hour with different candidates. And also before we get into this show, you know, just thank God President Trump is okay. What a thing for our nation to have to see, witness and have happen in this day and age. And I don't care what your party affiliation and which person it is, it's never, never an acceptable solution. Violence is never acceptable. So we have the RNC convention going this week and you know, I just wanted to shout it out there. Thank God that he's still here. So let's move on to our local issues here. And this is a school board race, folks, and I have in the studio with me today, Marsha Powers. Marsha Powers is running for as the incumbent for District Two Martin County School Board. You can look up information about Marsha at marshapowers.com. And also a lot of folks, this race in particular has caught a lot of attention and Marsha, let me say hello real quick. Good to have you in the studio. But I want to say this race has caught a lot of attention and I had a show a couple of weeks back. It was a candidate exchange between District Five County Commission candidates, Mike Serkis and Bruce Nathan. And that exchange is set up where they each submitted questions to each other ahead of time. And then public, the public submitted questions to me, which I shared with them ahead of time as well. So there was no surprises, but the show went off very well and we really got some great insight into those two candidates. And everybody said, when is Sydney and Marsha going to be on? When Sydney and Marsha going to be on? And for whatever reason, your race seemed to garner more attention on that than any other. And I just want to say that initially both of you had agreed to do the candidate exchange. And then Sydney Thomas decided not to. She withdrew and I don't know why, but I just wanted to throw that out there. So folks know why that didn't happen because I was excited about it. But Sydney's been on the show and now Marsha's on the show. And there's been a candidate forum you had out at Banner Lake about a week ago, I think it was. So a lot, a lot of opportunities to get to know the folks. So let me open this up. Marsha, tell us a little bit about yourself. You've been a school board member since 2012.
Yes, thank you, Casey. Thanks for having me. It's always great to be able to share my, who I am and my platform. Again, I'm Marsha Powers. I'm your current District Two School Board Member. I'm a lifelong resident of Martin County. In fact, I'm a fourth generation Martin County resident. I have my husband, Kevin, who's also a lifelong resident and our three children. And two of who are back here, living and working in Martin County. And so we're super proud of them and what they're doing. So as you said, I've been on the school board for quite some time. I'm super pleased right now specifically with the direction of the school, the school board and our school administration. As you know, we just, our new superintendent just completed his first year with pretty stellar review by the entire board. And so I think we're on the right track. We have great leadership and we're moving forward.
With that, Marsha, because you have been sitting on the board since 2012, you went and saw a change with how the superintendent is hired through the, to the schools. It used to be a voter referendum, basically. And now the superintendent is hired through the school board and he reports to the school board. So tell us your thoughts on that, how that's been going, because we did have one changeover since Dr. Malley was the very first superintendent. And now we have Mr. Maine, which is, as I, as you just said, I have heard just positive remarks about him across the board. So tell us how that transition kind of played out and what your insight is to that.
Yeah, I think, you know, change is difficult and change is not easy all the time. But we did make a smooth transition from elected superintendent to appointed. The voters chose to make that change in Martin County. It had been, I think, been on the ballot four times previously. But they did vote to change that and we had a transition to our first appointed superintendent. And after he resigned, we had a really great candidate that was internal. And the board voted unanimously to move Mr. Maine into that position. And it has been, he hit the ground running really and has been a very dynamic leader in a, in a time of real change for education in the state of Florida and the nation, really.
Folks, I see you tuning in on Facebook. Appreciate that. As you know, with my candidate series, I can watch for questions through the Facebook live feed. If you have something for Marsha, I just cannot take live phone calls during the show. When I had your opponent in here, we talked in depth about what a lot of people called the book censorship or book banning. And to me, it's a book review to make sure that the books are appropriate for the age that they're, they're presented to. You're sitting on the board and I know there's a lot of contentious meetings. So kind of give us your thought process as watching this unfold. We had, we had national media attention over this and tell us what your thought process was about the entire book review process.
So just, just to be clear, this is, we're following the laws of the state of Florida when it comes to reviewing books. And when we initiated and approved the policy as a board, that policy is set up so that at each individual school, if there is a book that is challenged by a member of the public or a parent, that the first step is for that book to be reviewed at the school by educators with the experience that they have. And then it goes to the district. If there's some sort of issue, it goes to the district where it is again reviewed by experts, educational experts. To date, there has not been a single book that has made it to the board for us to review. All of those decisions have been made at either the school or district level by educators. So you know, I, I kind of have to trust that process. They're the ones that have been trained. They're the ones who know the value. And if those books need to be on the shelves, then you know, they will let us know that. But to date, we haven't had to review any books as a board.
Why do you suppose that is? I find that interesting because there was, there was so much contention about books being removed that they're comparing it to Nazi Germany and things that these books are available in libraries, they're available in bookstores. So it's, to me, it's not at all a book banning. But with it being said, why do you suppose none of them have come back to the board?
Well, I think a lot of it is the training that they received, the requirements that are kind of set up in the law on what is appropriate for children to have access to in our schools. And I think a lot of it is just simply based on that. It's, it cannot be objectionable. It cannot be pornographic. It cannot be, I think there were a lot of adult romance novels that include things that we probably as parents, a lot of us wouldn't want our children exposed to. So they really looked at that, those embellishments. And sometimes I think, why did they add that? It's such a good book. Why do you add things like that that really shouldn't be in a children's library?
Right. The storyline's good. You didn't need to put in the salacious part, which kind of sounds like a lot of our news stories. One thing your opponent has is let's restore the district's reputation to what it was 12 years ago, which happens to be when you first joined the school board. So what do you think about the district's reputation over the last 12 years?
Well, first of all, 12 years ago, when I came on the school board, and I don't know if you remember this or not, Casey, but the school district was on the front page of the newspaper almost daily because of the dysfunction that existed. And really was really the impetus for me running in the first place was the, the true dysfunction that was happening. I mean, there were lawsuits. There were so much going on in the school district that wasn't about children. And you know, I just, my, my focus was to restore the focus to children and not the adults. And I mean, there was literally a time when they, the school board would not allow the superintendent to speak at a board meeting. And at one point, I think that the superintendent at the time went down and spoke at public comment so she could speak. It was just ridiculous. There were sunshine violations. There were, again, additional lawsuits. It was chaos. And I will say, since I've been on the board, the level of professionalism, the school board meetings run very smoothly. The relationship with the superintendent is great. So I would say, I don't want to go back to 2012. We don't, we don't need that type of chaos in our, in our children's education.
I actually do remember you, the school was in the headlines quite a bit. And actually, 2010 was the second to last referendum to change the superintendent from elected to appointed. And it, there was a lot of politicking and rumors and as you said, lawsuits going on. So very interesting look back in time, Marsha Powers. Leanne said, thank you for being the voice of reason and appreciate you tuning in, Leanne. Something that has been publicized quite a bit, that's very tough for just residents saying, what's going on is the reading scores. We had COVID hit and then children were left to be homeschooled essentially through, through computers. They were schooled at the district, but through the remote. Reading scores suffered greatly. Tell us a little bit about your insight and what the school board can do. And we're gonna, I'll have a follow-up question with that. Let's just talk about the reading.
Okay. Yeah, COVID really did impact the shutdown of our schools, sending kids home, a lot of times unsupervised, depending on virtual learning. It was tough. It was tough for children. It was tough for families. It was tough for our staff. I will say that during that time I was the chair. It was a very difficult time. But in Martin County, we were one of the first school districts to reopen on time and in person safely. And we got a lot of pushback. It was a super hard decision, but in the end, it was the right decision for children. We, this is a nationwide issue, reading scores, and we are seeing amazing improvement this year. I think the superintendent, superintendent just released our last progress monitoring scores, you know, and, and they have drastically improved. We're super excited about that. And you know, the new way that we monitor is three times a year. So at the beginning of the year, children are tested and then two more times. So that we're not waiting until the end of the year to address issues with reading. And we see this mostly in our, I would say, in our Title I schools that are suffering with their reading scores. And they suffered the most during COVID as well. So we are still recovering, but we're on the right track in Martin County.
Chuck Wayne, I appreciate you tuning in. The school district needs to get serious about recruiting volunteer teachers and staff to be vetted and trained for the Florida Guardian program.
So thank you for that. I, the school board voted quite some time ago that we have a partnership with our sheriff's department to employ school resource officers. And we're very thankful for that. The county commission and the sheriff's office funds that. I think up to $600,000 of the cost of those school resource officers, which is very, very important because obviously from a financial standpoint, it's very expensive. And I'm also on the, on the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Commission. And as a commission, we did vote to allow school districts to make that choice for themselves. If they want to have armed their teachers or they want to have guardians that they pay that are not necessarily law enforcement or maybe retired military or those types of things, that that training would be offered and each individual school district would be able to make that decision on their own. And I think that I'm, I'm open to have, continuing to have that conversation with, in conjunction with our, our sheriff. And I know we have a new incoming sheriff soon. And you know, I think that we as a school district have to continually look at school safety. It's a priority of mine. So I don't think that because we made a decision five years ago, that we don't continue to have those conversations. I don't know where the school board would go with that as a whole, but I'm open to having continual conversations about school safety specifically.
Definitely. And it's always going to take a majority vote to change, implement any policy like that within the school district. There's a conversation going on here on Facebook. Real quick, I'm going to let you weigh in. Karen Resaniti, and I'm sorry if I said that name wrong, Karen. The, the opening time was due to a decision made by the teachers' union. And somebody said, don't think so. The teachers protested nonstop to not open the schools. So can you kind of tell us, share us a little bit more about the opening of the schools after COVID?
So it was, we did get a lot of pushback from multiple stakeholders. It wasn't, I'm not going to say it was just the teachers' union. We had many conversations about that. I explicitly remember the meeting. I was, happened to be the chair at the time. And the board was going back and forth, vacillating to the, at one point I had to, I passed the gavel to the vice chair and I made the motion to open schools on time and in person. And the board supported that and voted unanimously to, to make that decision. And you know, again, I think it was the right decision. It wasn't just, and it, it was mostly about children and their education and the value of that. But it was also families. Families were struggling. Families were forced to go back to work as well. And you know, without, what are we going to do? Leave those kids unsupervised in homes? It, it was honestly the right thing to do for children and families.
Marsha, I'm going to step back one second. What is the role of the school board?
So the, the main roles of the school board are obviously policy and the budget. So we drive a lot of the decisions that can be made by the superintendent through those two methods. So when we, when we make policy, it's his job to follow it and do that on a daily, you know, to how, how he runs the school district on a daily basis. I think we're also the eyes and the ears in the public. We are the, you know, I get a lot of feedback from the public, from parents mostly, who have issues. I think that's part of what we do is we bring those issues forward and give the superintendent an opportunity to address those. I know some, some issues rise to the level that we talk as a school board about them. The cell phone policy being one of them that we just voted on last night. So those are things that we, we kind of take our information from our constituents and then we bring them forward to the superintendent and then we act on them as a board.
What did you vote on the cell phone policy?
I voted yes. So we, and it was a unanimous yes to change our policy. We will not allow cell phones at all on our school campuses. However, a student may bring their cell phone to school. It just has to be put away in a, in a secure place, backpack, not in sight during school. And then, you know, I, I understand the concerns that parent, parents had about after school, you know, walking home from the bus or after school activities or their students, their young students who are driving and they want to be able to know where they are.
Right.
So I think that's a good balance. And it is, I just want to say that cell phone use is, it's become such a huge distraction for education in general and, and distraction for many things, distraction for driving.
Yes.
You know, there's lots of things that, that the cell phones have caused. But we're not going to solve this problem without the help of parents. And we have to, you know, we're really going to try to get that message out, let them know what, what the new rules are, but also to have those conversations with their children before they come to school. Cause we don't want to, our goal is not to inconvenience parents, but it is also because we have to be in partnership with them to really solve this issue.
As a school board member as well, Marsha, can you explain to the public, districts are rated A, they're rated B, C. What does that rating mean and what is it comprised of?
So there's many different factors that go into a school grade. You know, obviously student performance is one factor. There's also attendance. There's acceleration points. That means how many of our students are taking industry certifications? How many are taking AP and IB and those types of acceleration coursework that are outside the norm of reading, math, science, that type of thing? So you get extra points for all of those things. So it's not just about student performance. And you know, we have, our grade did drop. We were one, I think we were one or two points from an A. And I know that this, our superintendent is focused on raising that. We're currently tied for number ninth out of 67 counties in the state of Florida as far as accountability standards go. So I mean, we have work to do, but I think we're on the right track.
It's good to know. I didn't realize we were ninth out of all the, the counties here in Florida. So that's very good news because they did, they, they started to backtrack a little bit, but they are increasing again in recent years.
Well, and you have to know that during COVID, everybody dropped. And then now everybody's clawing their way back and we really are focusing on those schools that have had some challenges, that we're really focused on giving them the supports that they need to increase their scores. And I think overall, those low, lower performing schools, because we're investing more resources, will see the return.
Okay. I really have a lot of questions for you because you have been sitting on the school board. So there's a lot of issues that have come and gone over the years. Charter schools. There's different charter schools that I can think of two recently, Treasure Coast Classical Academy and of course Indian Town High School. One is more technical based, one is academic based. That's, can't think of the term right now, but they're, they were bringing something to the district that the public schools were not providing. What are, what is your stance? And again, how much can the school board really influence whether or not a charter school is approved in the community?
So we don't have a lot of influence over that anymore. We are the charter school authorizer. But I, that is going away because I think the state will start authorizing charter schools as opposed to. And even though we are the authorizer as well, we don't, we oversee, we make sure that they are financially stable. So we get their financial documents on a regular basis and they're reviewed to make sure that they're in a good financial standing. But we also, we're in this together. I am a, I am a huge supporter of school choice. I believe that parents know what's best for their child. And if they want to choose a charter school, if they want to choose to homeschool or they want to choose private school, that is completely up to them. They know what's best for their child. And I don't think that we as school board members or the government should get in the way of them making that choice. So I, you know, I'm a proponent, I think that as we, as, we're lucky in Martin County that we don't have a proliferation of charter schools. We have Hope Center for Autism, Treasure Coast Classical, Indian Town High School.
Clark.
And Clark Advanced Learning Center. And you know, we, we have two, two of the schools are really targeting, you know, tough situations. We have Indian Town High School, which has, you know, majority of their students are English language learners. And then Hope Center for Autism, which is really tailored to a very specific population. And in my mind, we're very lucky to have both of those schools that can really focus resources in those areas.
Absolutely. And they do bring something that's very unique. And classical teaching is what I was thinking with Treasure Coast Classical Academy, classical. How about, here's another big issue that's come up a lot over the years. The public has been very involved. And you know, when it comes down to it, the teachers are so important for our children.
Absolutely.
Teacher pay. What is your view on, on how this is being handled? Are they being paid enough? What is your stance? Can you increase pay?
So I agree. I, the teachers are not paid enough. But we also have a fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers and to make sure that we are not putting ourselves in a position that we are jeopardizing our financial stability as a school district. We have, I think we're making good strides. It's, you know, we, we're at the mercy of our budget. And I, I think that we're on the right track. This year finally approved our, the teacher contract for last year. We are rewarding teachers for their longevity in the school district. So based on years of experience. And I don't know what's going to happen this year with the negotiations. I know we're just getting started. We just finally got dates from the union last week to get those negotiations started. And I know that the superintendent and the board are really committed to addressing that quickly so that teachers will have any raise that we're able to give and agree on early in their, in the school year instead of waiting until the end.
How tough is it to go through the budget and are there any restrictions through state statute or directives from the state on what you can pay teachers?
Well, there's not any, I wouldn't say there are restrictions on what we can pay. But when we get our budget, it's not like we just get a, a set, say a million dollars. We can't just say $999,000 is going to go to pay salaries. Because, and I, I don't want to also neglect to mention all of our other employees that are also, that, you know, they're, they're burdened by inflation and cost of living here in Martin County as well. And some of our, you know, our lowest paid employees, they're struggling as well. So we, as a school board, we have to address all of that. We have about half of our, our workforce is teachers and the other half are the support staff that really keep our district running on a daily basis and really support teachers, our janitors and our bus drivers and all the support staff. We can't run a district without them and teachers can't teach without them. So we have to, that's, it's a delicate balance that we can't focus on just one group. And then your question that you asked, because I was like, oh, I thought of that when you were saying.
Just how much of it is directive of the state? You're kind of, you are answering.
Yes. And, and so when our budget comes down too, we get a lot of our dollars are called categoricals. So they're already earmarked to a certain category, like transportation. We get a set categorical for transportation. It's not enough to cover the complete cost, but we know we have earmarked a very, a set part of our budget that we cannot spend that money on anything else. And we have that in many different categoricals across the district. So it's not like we have complete control over our entire budget.
There's a lot to look at up there as a school board member and a lot to control. And, and let's share real quickly, how large is the school district?
So we serve right around 19,000 students. We have about 2,600, 2,600 employees. I think about 1,300 are teachers. Yeah, it's, it's a big, it's a big business.
What's your budget?
Our budget is, I think, now, I haven't even looked at the, our new budget numbers that are just starting to come in. We, it's over 500 million.
It's a, it's a really big business, so to speak, to run and, and keep, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to the wheel, I should say.
There really are. And it's, we're, we're very, very fortunate in Martin County that, you know, we have the support of our constituents and our taxpayers. You know, we, the voters approved a half cent sales tax and the half mil for pay for teachers. The majority of it goes to teacher salaries. And so we're very lucky in Martin County that we have that. The, the half cent sales tax was, when we went out for that and the voters approved it, it was for seven years. And we said, here is exactly what we're going to do. We are going to build two replacement schools, one in Palm City and one in Jensen Beach. They were old schools that were antiquated and really needed to be completely torn down and rebuilt. And we did that. And we also used it for additional capital projects around the district that we had a lot of schools that had some water intrusion and just, just little issues that our normal capital budget wouldn't support. So we were, we have been able to, to do that. That will be sunsetting. And we did not, as we as a board said, we will not pursue that half cent sales tax again. And so that sunsets. Now, the millage is a different issue. So that, we have to go back to the voters every four years. And it is, will be on the ballot in November of this year. As I said, the, the lion's share of the money goes to teacher salaries. And the rest is school, we have school safety and mental health and other initiatives to support our other employees as well. So that will be on the ballot in November. And the reason it's quickly back on the ballot, if people remember it was on the ballot, there was a change in the law that only allows these millage referendums to be during a presidential election. And it has to be in the general. We can't do it in the primary anymore. And it has to be in the general. We can't do it in the primary anymore. We can't have that item in the primary. So in order to not have a lapse in the years, so we had to go this year, even though this will not take effect until twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. It's like, because we had, it was so quick that we had to come back. And I don't want the voters to be confused by that because it really was just because of the change in the law. And when we can bring those forward, if we waited till the next presidential election, we would have a lapse in the years. And we can't, can't do that.
Well, and it makes sense to have these referendums during the presidential election because that's when most of the voters turn out. So you're trying to get the community involved as much as possible.
Absolutely.
And you're covering it now, but that is something you have had to deal with on the school board at this time is aging infrastructure. There's a lot of aging infrastructure out there. So two of the schools have been replaced. I think there's something going on at South Fork as well, right?
Yeah, South Fork High School is getting a brand new gymnasium and athletic, kind of athletic facility. Will be their main building. It'll, so they're really excited about that. South Fork High School opened, I believe, in nineteen eighty-two. I just know that. I was the second graduating class from South Fork High School, so that gym's been around, I'm not going to say how long, but it's been a while.
Okay. Yeah, it's time. It is. It's truly time. Marilyn, thank you for tuning in. She said employees saw a huge increase in healthcare. Why was this not put out to bid to get a competitive plan and price?
So yes, and that's, it's, it is a problem. Healthcare is a problem. I know in my, my other, my work that I do as well, it is a burden that all, many people are experiencing. I think we probably, I can't say what the, the school board will do, but I know we will be looking at that. We, we have been looking and saving our dollars over the years to potentially be self-insured so that we can control those expenses, kind of similar to what like the Martin County Fire Rescue and the Martin County Sheriff's Office do. They have their own clinic. That comes with additional expense as well. But we have been kind of putting aside, if we get any refunds or anything from our, as a result of our insurance, we've been kind of saving those dollars in hopes that we will have enough in the bank to support going self-insured or at least partially, that we could build our own clinic and start to kind of manage costs that way. Common prescriptions, offering those through a clinic versus, you know, going out to, you know, wherever anybody wants to go. We can kind of start to control that internally. So we're, it's, it is a hard, it's tough because, you know, when you see the cost of insurance and it has really exponentially hit families.
Yes, it has.
You know, and we are able to currently offer a no cost or a very low cost option to single employees or if they're only insuring themselves. But when you try to start to insure a family, and I know even in, you know, my work that I do, it's, we, we pay about the same as the school district for employees. It's just.
It's high. It's astronomically high.
It can be if you, other than childcare or college tuition, it's probably, it probably is the single most expensive thing for a family to budget.
Not a school issue, but the Affordable Healthcare Act is not so affordable.
No, it is not.
I just got to say that. I have to talk about Title IX. It's a landmark federal civil rights law in the United States that was enacted as part of the Education Amendments of seventy-two. It prohibits sex-based discrimination in any school or any other education program that receives funding from the federal government. How has Martin County School District applied itself to Title IX requirements?
So I, we haven't made any changes since the federal government came down with the changes to allow gender identity to be used for determining what sport a student plays. You know, whether, you know, and our governor has said, the state of Florida and other states are protesting that. And there is litigation in process. As of right now, we have not changed that. I do not support the change. I do not believe that, you know, biological men should be playing women's sports. I think it, as a mom of two girls, I think it's dangerous. I think it's unsafe for my, my children. And I can imagine that it would be the same for other families. I just don't think that that is, it's the right thing. I don't know what the solution is to make that population feel included, but this is not the way. Whether it's coed, you know, going into it, if you want to have coed teams, fine, that's what you sign up for. But when you sign up for women's sports, you sign, I sign up for my girls to play against competitors that are equal and, or as much equal as possible. And, you know, it's just the biological differences are too much and it would, I feel it's a safety issue.
I appreciate that. And actually, I agree with the daughter myself. I think, you know, it's, it's very tough to have males and females competing against each other. If the females are expecting to compete against a female and you have, there's sometimes there's one that really excels and that's, that's absolutely fine. But it's a whole nother ballgame when you have different genders competing against each other as one. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing the school district and how do you plan to address them?
Well, I think obviously, you know, we have issues with, like, the entire nation is having an issue with recruiting and retaining high quality teachers. I think that's something that, I will say, I think the superintendent reported to us at our meeting last night that we only have ten instructional vacancies right now, which is a huge accomplishment. I think last year at this time, he said we had about thirty. So we've cut that down significantly. But I think it's, it's a bigger issue than we can solve here in Martin County. On, in general, nationwide, we're seeing less and less students, college students going into education. And it's just the way it's been. It's been on decline for many years and now we're really feeling it. So I think that what we can do is try to make it very desirable. And I always tell people this when they're, when they ask me about schools in Martin County. There's not a single school in Martin County that I wouldn't send my kids to and I, there's not a single school I would not recommend. Or, you know, I would recommend every school to a teacher who wants to teach. They are all amazing. They have great leadership. They're safe. So I, you know, I think we're ahead of the game that way because we do have a pretty good environment here in Martin County and a safe place to work.
Employment in general has been a challenge for the district and not just the district, businesses across the board. How is that going now? Because a lot of that comes down to employee retention, employee pay and just having that available workforce.
Right.
What is your perspective? And we talked about teacher pay and you brought up, there's a lot of other positions out there that you need to worry about that need to get a fair wage. Where does the school district stand right now with positions?
Well, I think we're, we're in, for the academics, you know, the teaching positions, I think we're in a really good place right now. You know, for the upcoming school year. Yes, do I think we, we have, it's a continual problem. Like, you know, people are coming and going throughout the school year. So, you know, our HR department is working diligently every day to have opportunities for the public to understand what we do and what job openings we have. And that it is, it is a really great place to work. It depends on, you know, what you're looking for. I think that the legislature has always also given flexibility on what we can, how we can hire people. Like, and I know our state college is offering for maybe professionals that are coming into the field that maybe weren't educated as teachers, but they can work on getting their teacher credentials. You know, and I think sometimes it's good, sometimes, you know, to have a four-year degree in education. But then you have someone who has a four-year degree maybe in something else that doesn't, no, there is a, there is a gap. There is a training gap that has to, has to really take, you have to take ownership of that and make sure that if you're going to hire someone like that, that you give them the appropriate training to make them, to help them be ready on day one to educate our students. So I think there's a lot of opportunity. I think pay is obviously one of them. We're going to, at some point, it will have to, it's going to come to a head and we're going to, not that we're going to address it at the local level. I think we've done what we can do. We've gone to the voters. The voters has said yes to increase the pay of our employees. We are doing as a school board as much as we can incrementally every year to increase pay within our budget and being fiscally responsible. It's going to have to come from, yeah, somewhere else, honestly.
Karen Resonidi, president of the teachers' union. Am I correct about that?
Former president.
Former president. Okay. I just wanted to point that out, but she also brought up another comment that prior to 2014, the school board and employees split the increase in health insurance. But in 2014, the school board froze their contribution to sixty-five hundred dollars and any additional increases have now been absorbed strictly by the employees.
Right. There is a, there has been a, the school district did go to a cap on the contribution. I'm not, I'm only one board member, so I can say that, you know, do I think it needs to be addressed? Absolutely.
What inspired you to run for the school board and what unique perspectives or experiences do you bring to this role?
So, you know, like I said before, there was so much chaos in, in the school district when I ran. And that, that was really, my, my children were younger. I was seeing the impact that it was having in schools and that's kind of what inspired me. I wanted to be the person that could be the calm and cool and not, and restore some of the professionalism that is required to be on a board. And I think that I have been successful at that. I haven't, I've been on the losing side of some things and I've, I've championed some things that I think are really great, which I'll get to in a minute because I want to talk about.
Please do.
Fifth grade at Indian Town Middle School. But I think that we have, you know, we made that shift to a really functional board. And even though there have been through the years, different viewpoints, different people coming at it, you know, obviously have different values and different ways of thinking. I think that it has always been professional and, you know, that was kind of my goal. But I think my unique experience in the, in the business community, my, my connections in the community, my connections with our elected officials has been really beneficial in making positive change in Martin County.
And I will say, we've got a little over, I think, about seven minutes left, just so you know. I know the hour goes fast, but it's, it's great to have these in-depth conversations. So we really get an idea of what, what, what's your focus and what your motivations are. And I will say, you're absolutely right. Back in 2012, the focus wasn't on the kids anymore. It was so divisive. And so it is really nice to see a school board that that is brought back to what education's all about, the kids, right?
Right. Exactly right.
Let's not forget. I want to make sure that we do focus and hear from you on what you were just talking about with what you brought to the fifth graders because I don't want to run out of time and mess it. So go, platform is yours.
So that was one of my things when I ran in 2012 was, you know, I was born and raised in Indian Town. I went to Warfield Elementary, Indian Town Middle School and then eventually graduated from South Fork High School. And I attended fifth grade at Indian Town Middle School. And fifth grade, back when I attended fifth grade, wasn't as high stakes because now we have high stakes testing, which we didn't really have back when I was in fifth grade. But, you know, we, we saw the, the issues that it caused as a community in Indian Town with having elementary school children in a middle school. And when I first came on the board, it was really funny because I was talking about this move. And at the time, the assistant superintendent said to me, oh, well, that was, that's just temporary. It, you know, we're, we're going to fix it. We just did it temporarily. And I was like, wait, I attended fifth grade. That's not temporary. That was probably twenty-five years prior. But we, this year, we completed the first year with fifth grade at Warfield. And what I will say is that having a fifth grade in a middle school would not be acceptable anywhere else in Martin County. Why it was ever acceptable in Indian Town is beyond me. But we moved the fifth grade this year. The board voted unanimously to have the superintendent to initiate that with his support. And we have seen double-digit improvements at Warfield, at Warfield in our fifth graders, just because of the move. The focus is different in elementary school and as they move up in the testing, you know, it's all different. And so we have seen significant improvement and it was, I hate that it took this long, but it was the right thing to do for children.
It is. It's astonishing. It's about forty years for this temporary change. You know, part of it might be psyche with kids too. You think the fifth graders are either bottom of the heap or top of the heap. So, you know, now they're, they're like the rest of the county, they're top of the heap. How will you bring your background and skills to contribute to the effective governance of the schools?
So I think that, you know, as I've said before, you know, I have a vast, vast experience in both public and private business. I, my, my experience on other boards like the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Commission, I also serve, I was appointed by the Senate President for the Council for Early Grade Success. So I have a lot of experience in a big picture governance and really bringing that and, you know, supporting. So in those roles, really, our job is to create the policy, which we have done consistently for the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Commission. Every year, the commission has brought forward, since the massacre at Parkland, has brought forward legislation that has passed unanimously across the board every year since that tragedy happened. And as we learn more, in fact, the commission was originally supposed to sunset after three years. And it was extended by the legislature because there are so many issues that still need to be addressed. What I can say is that Martin County is probably, I would say, the safest one of this, if not the safest, one of the safest school districts in the state of Florida. We have a great safety and security team here. That is not the case across the state of Florida. So there's still a lot of work for us to do. I'll be, we have another, we have a meeting coming up the end of this month and that we'll be talking about the upcoming legislative session and things that we want to bring forward to the legislature.
Thank you for serving on that committee. I, I think that it needs to be pointed out a little bit more. How many people actually do serve on that committee? Because this was something that, people were invited from around the state, but it's a very small number and it shows to me your leadership skills that, why you were invited to be part of that. So how many people are on that committee?
Thank you. There's fifteen of us across the state of Florida. I am one of two school board members that was selected to be on the committee. We, you know, a lot of it is, initially, the work was a lot of law enforcement based. It was, as a mom, it was.
She too worked, folks. It was tough.
It was hard. It was really hard because when you're sitting next to someone whose child was murdered that day and you're trying to make policy to prevent things like that from happening again. It's really a difficult, it was, it was very emotional, but very rewarding in the end.
Thank you for, again, for serving. That's very difficult, but important. How will you support efforts to improve curriculum standards and teaching practices within the schools?
So I think that, you know, the, we as a school board really have supported our educators. And I think that one of the things that we do is really support professional development. It is a huge commitment on behalf of the board, but it is also a huge commitment on behalf of the superintendent that we are really investing a lot in training our teachers and giving them the tools necessary to implement what they do every day. And I know it's not, it's not always an easy job. There's a lot of outside forces, you know, a lot of opinions, a lot of differences from parents and, and the community. But in the end, it's our job to make sure that our staff are all equipped and ready to help our students achieve.
To piggyback on that, what is your stance on incorporating new technologies and teaching methodologies into the classroom?
So I, I'm, I am open to anything that we can, anything that works and that benefits children. I don't want to put additional burdens on teachers, so I really think that we have to have those conversations and those very candid conversations with those, all of the stakeholders, the parents, teachers, you know, and even students, to understand, you know, what is working and what will help them be successful.
We're running down to just a couple of minutes. We have been speaking with Marsha Powers. She has been Martin County School District Board Member since 2012. And she's running again for office from District Two. Her opponent is Sidney Thomas. If you want to find out more about Marsha, she has a wonderful website, marshapowers.com. Marsha, how will you ensure accountability among school board members and district administration?
So I think that we, we have a pretty good accountability system for our, for our teachers. We are working to improve our evaluation system for our administrators. I think that that is really important. I think that they should be equally, have some equal accountability standards, because they are, even though they're not directly in the classroom, they do direct that work. So there, there must be accountability standards. And I can tell you that whether you're a teacher or you're an administrator, we have really become very data-driven. And I know that's hard, not, it's not about testing. It's really about the data and owning that and really focusing in, not just on our overall performance, but really drilling in on children and how they're performing, so that we can start to address their needs early on. And so we're not dealing with this in sixth, seventh, eighth, or high school.
And you don't, you're not basing it on assumptions. You're basing it on the data. So I like that. Marsha, we have just one year, one minute left. We had a year. Can you just reach out to the folks? Why should they vote for you?
So I would be honored to have the vote of Martin County voters. I have years of leadership experience. I think that I bring that to, to this board. My, my experience in both the public and private sector are, you know, invaluable. And I hope that that's recognized, my relationships in the community with the business community, but also at our state and local levels and government.